Good evening, Mayor Landman.
Hello, Councilman Ford. Good to see you. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Down there at City Hall this evening, huh?
Yeah, it was pretty nice. I wish the rain would come back.
You might want to wait a couple hours for that, but nevertheless, I hear you.
Did you bring your umbrella in case you need it?
I'm prepared for anything.
Alrighty.
Always a good way to go to a council meeting. All right. We'll wait just a minute longer. And with that, we actually are at six o'clock, so I'll check with staff and make sure are we set to go? Yep, we're ready to go, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, I'd like to begin this evening by welcoming everybody to this joint meeting of the Catati City Council and the Successor Agency to be former Catati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, April 26. And so now that we've called the meeting to order, I'd like to begin by, start with a roll call from our city clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is our city attorney supposed to be out in the attendees?
That's a good question. I don't know if he's in trouble. I kind of doubt it. So I think staff's alerted. I think they'll move him in and you might have saved the day, Mr. Harvey. So thank you.
Boy, you did it, Mark. Bowled him right over.
We have good staff. So with that, let's get back. And now that staff has a chance to complete that, since it's the same person, we'll give them a second to collect himself and then we'll have our roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
Here. All right. And as we traditionally do, I'd like the city manager just to take a moment. And if you could introduce the members or our staff who are here for the public.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So myself, the amino bid to the manager. We also have Angela Porter, our Director of Administrative Services. We have John Barker, our city attorney. We have JP Harry's, our senior planner. Noah House, our Director of Community Development. We also have Craig Scott, our Director of Public Works. And then finally, Michael Parrish, our Chief of Police. And then Kevin Patterson, our Deputy City Clerk, as well as Kerry Behan, handing the video on the backside.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. So with that, I'm going to ask everybody to join me, please, as we move to item three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
And with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. That is always difficult to do through a live video feed, but once again, we've got through it. So thank you, Council. This takes us to item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions in ordinance is introduced and or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. So first, I'm going to go to the council and ask if there's any corrections or additions to the minutes. And I'm not seeing any hands pop up. Thank you, Council. With that, I will open it to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you for that. So then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion. We have two items tonight on consent, one, or in the minutes rather. One is our regular meeting from April 12, and the other is our strategic planning special meeting from the 19th.
Move to approve?
Motion from the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? Did I hear Councilmember Sparks?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. You all have me in suspense for a moment. I wasn't sure. All right. So we have a motion in a second. I'll ask if we have a roll call.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. That takes us to item five, which is announcements. So I'll ask you all to bear with me because I have a few things I need to read. And we'll begin tonight with a meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items. Where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where the citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next. Measure S supports police service. A variety of recreational programs for all ages and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details on the web at catatycity.org. Next. Citizens interested in receiving city of Catati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or by simply texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. And lastly, like always, we love to hear from you. So please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or through email at info@catatycity.org. Now, if you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact it, except 707-792-4611. And of course, if you do have an emergency, please do contact 911. Continue to look for updates in the city's website and our social media channels, which include Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So let's see, this brings us to approval of the final agenda or the final agenda. And I'll ask the city manager if we have any changes?
No, Mayor, no changes. Just a note for consent calendar item 8A, the commercial canvas ordinance, some minor typographical updates that were added after the council, after the agenda was published.
And I did receive those. Thank you. All right. So this is an action item. We do have public presence. So I will ask if we could open public comments, see if anybody wants to comment on this.
If you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Patterson. So this brings us to item seven. This is citizens business and public comment for consent calendar items. And once again, I do have a short paragraph to read to everybody. So please bear with me. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take actions on any item that is not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy 2021 dash zero one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda or a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will see if we can open to citizens business tonight, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back to the council then to item eight. This is our consent calendar, which we had no comments on. We have two items tonight, item A, which is our commercial cannabis ordinance with some revisions up. There were a few pages in the packet, just a few, I think you might have noticed. And then we also have item B, which is contract for backflow testing. So I'll begin by asking if any council member wishes to pull any item. And if not, I would have then asked for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
We have a motion. We have a motion from Councilmember Ford, seconded by Vice Mayor Harvey. If we could have a roll call vote in that consent calendar, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
All right. Okay, so that brings us to item nine, which is direction on future agenda items. And I'll ask if we have any direction tonight from any of my colleagues for future agenda items. Going once, twice. Thank you. And that concludes that. And brings us to item 10. As public hearings, this, of course, is an action item. And our public hearing tonight is multifamily housing streamline. So I'll begin by asking for the staff report from that place.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. My name's JP Harry's. I'm a senior planner with the city of Catati. And there is a PowerPoint presentation for tonight. Thank you, Kevin. So tonight we are talking about multi-family housing streamlining and removal of barriers to development. This is agenda type item 10A, and it begins on package page 578. Next slide, please, Kevin. Just for some very overview background, you've seen this slide a number of times. This effort is one directed by our general plan, but we pursued a planning grant in 2019 to cover a number of different things related to housing. The first was our ADU JADU Code Amendment. The second was the Cottage Housing Ordinance. The third were was the Objective Design Guidelines. And then this is the final piece of that SB2 planning grant, which is multifamily housing, streamlining, and removing barriers to their development. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance does, does four things, really five, but the first is it increases, it would increase the maximum allowed lot coverage in the NM Neighborhood Medium Density zoning district from 50 to 55%. It increases the maximum allowed lot coverage in the NU Neighborhood Urban Zoning District. This is our most urban or densest residential zoning district from 60% to 75%. It increases the maximum allowed height in the NU zoning district from 28 feet to 35 feet without a use permit. Currently, the, the limit is 28 feet, but you can go up to 35 feet with the use permit approval. And four, which is really two pieces, it removes a requirement for a use permit to develop multifamily housing in the, in the NU district, the neighborhood urban district. As well, it would remove the use permit requirement to develop housing in the NM Neighborhood Medium Zoning District. Next slide, please. This effort has comes to us from the general plan. And there's two basic elements within the general plan that provides us direction. The first is the land use element. And the second is the housing element. Within the land use element, there's action item LU1B. And basically what LU1B directs the city to do is to clean up its zoning code to be consistent with policies that were adopted as part of the general plan in 2015. Specifically, it tells us that we need to adjust the maximum building height to the, excuse me, the zoning code standard for the maximum building height in the neighborhood urban zone to 35 feet without the use permit. And it also tells us that we need to increase the site coverage to 55% in the MU, excuse me, NM district and 75% in the urban zone. So these were policies that were adopted in 2015, which we are now amending our zoning code to do. There's also a broader, more general direction, which is to review and update the city's development permitting process to provide a streamlined and straightforward process. And at a minimum, consider methods to streamline and simplify the process, including the process for review by city staff and also look for opportunities to reduce redundancies and delays. Next slide, please. And then also within the housing element, there are two specific programs that we're talking about tonight. One of them, program 2.6 is barrier removals for multifamily development. And it says, this is the program that was adopted with the 2015 housing element. The land use coast code will be amended to remove two potential barriers to the provision of multifamily housing. One amendment will be to remove the conditional use permit requirement for multifamily development of five or more units in the NU zone. And the second is to reduce parking requirements. I'll just say that we're not talking about parking tonight. That's a, it's a different issue that we want to do in a more holistic way. But right now we're focusing on use permit requirements. Then program 39 is, it basically reiterates program 26, which is to monitor the requirement for a use permit for multifamily projects larger than four units in the NU zone. And if that requirement for a use permit is shown to be an impediment to review the feasibility of allowing those projects as a permitted use. So next slide, please. So breaking down what we've done, I wanted to kind of break it down in three different categories. One is the cleanup items. These are items that we've already kind of committed, we've already done as part of the general plan. We're just amending the land use code. And again, those are the land coverage increases in the NM and NU district and the maximum height without a use permit in the NU zoning district. Then there is an explicit general plan direction to remove the requirement for a use permit to develop multifamily housing in the NU zoning districts. And then there's that broad, general, broad direction, which in analyzing the need for a use permit, we chose to, staff chose to include NM in this thing. So we would eliminate, pretty much eliminate use permits for all multifamily housing in these districts. Let's go back one slide, please. I do want to say the way the ordinance is structured, as we get into deliberations about it, it's not an all or nothing. The ordinance is structured in a way so that you can line item if, like, for example, you're not, you do, you know, you don't want to move forward with any one of these items. We can't, if you put it within your motion, we can adjust, you know, we can adjust the ordinance easily to accommodate your concerns. Next slide. So this is the map. This is a zoning map. It's not the entire zoning map. It really focuses on those areas that, that where the NM and NU districts are. The NU is that rusty orange. The NM is that kind of light tan areas. And there is some orange on the left, the CG district. That is not, there are no NM or NU districts located west of Highway 101. So everything we're talking about is pretty much, pretty much along the Old Redwood Highway Court. Well, actually, kind of just off of the Old Redwood Highway Corridor and along East Catati. Most of that purple is all downtown specific plan. And this is, by the way, on package page 581, if you want to refer back to the map as we continue. Okay, next slide, please. So I just want to talk about what the amendments mean. So increasing lot coverage, some people aren't aware what lot coverage is. Lot coverage is any impermeable surface. And in Catati, that means any kind of building coverage as well as asphalt and concrete. So you can see the driveways, sheds, primary residence, ADUs, anything like that, they would all count as lot coverage. And on, on the left, I've also shown the other zoning districts, just so you can get a sense of the variability in, in the amount of coverage. Obviously, in the much larger parcels of our rural parcels, it's, it's low, it's down to 10 to 30%. And as we get into the most urban areas like the, like the downtown specific plan or the commercial downtown zoning district, it can be up to 100% land coverage. Excellent. Thank you. So the other amendment, it would be, this is a piece of the ordinance or kind of section of the ordinance. It would eliminate the use permit for structures 35 feet. Or it would allow up to 35 feet without a use permit. And I wanted to, the little image on the bottom shows you how we measure height. It basically is a, just measured as a vertical distance from the grade straight up. So on a flat surface, it's real easy. On a, on a slope, we kind of continue moving down the slope, measuring vertically straight up. So homes will have to stair step down to maintain a, maintain a high, height distance. And then on the left, again, I've shown the, the various height limits that exist within the city, the top line there are our, our VL, and now and now those are all the other residential zoning districts. And they're limited to 28 feet. And then as we get into the commercial areas, it's 35 feet. The slash means it's like for CE, 35 feet is the limit. You could go up to 45 with a use permit. And and within the DSP, it ranges certain districts within the DSP are 35 feet. But if you're down in what we call the Northern Gateway, which is where Gravestine Highway meets with Old Red. That area there, the, the height limit is 50 feet. And excellent. So these are probably the more, the changes that you're most interested in. This is, would just amend the the allow, it's basically, it's the table within our zoning code, which lists the allowable uses. So the changes are proposed in the NM and NU district and where multifamily housing is listed as a requiring a use permit, the proposal is to amend that to, to make those permitted. Now, I do want to say this doesn't mean that they would become permitted like by right development, meaning that this wouldn't lead to a non-discretionary approval. All these projects would still require design review approval by either the Planning Commission or the City Council, depending on the nature of the project. They will all require notification of neighbors and it will, then it would be required to, to be heard and approved in a public hearing in a public setting. Next slide, please. So the primary effects of the proposed amendments are really three things. The increased land coverage and height would allow for larger structure sizes, maybe larger parking areas. They might be able to increase density up to our maximums. Some of the feedback we've gotten over time has been that our land coverage limitations can make it difficult to both meet the density requirements that they have, the minimum densities, as well as provide the parking. And also I want to make a note on this, that the NM and NU districts currently in the city are all developed. Now, some are very underdeveloped, but all of them have some form of development. So pretty much everything we're talking about tonight would be in the form of redevelopment or, you know, kind of bringing a parcel up to where, where we kind of want the level of development to be at. The other effect is sequo scope may be limited. Sequel. If you, if your discretionary matter is only design review, then it would be limited to what your design review issues are. This is a fairly new court finding. I will say though, however, that in most of our areas, we'd be talking about, they'd be, most of these areas probably would not be subject to sequel because of the fact that they're infill and there's a number of other exemptions that most of these parcels would be eligible for. So I don't see that as a big issue here. And then the other one is that we would not be required to make use permit findings. But we would still have to make designer review findings. And I'll discuss that. I find those to be mostly redundant to what we do when we make the use findings. Also, project approval will remain discretionary. So we're not moving to straight by right development with these proposals. Next slide. And this is, these are the use permit findings versus design review findings. And that spider web in the middle is basically an attempt to show you how in every one of the use permit findings, we really address those issues at the, when we make those type of design review findings. And I will, another thing I want to mention, like when you designate an area for multifamily housing, you go through the effort of determining whether or not that use is appropriate. It is kind of really pretty unusual to see an area zone for multifamily housing and then have a use permit requirement on top of that. You don't see that very often, except for in very specific cases. And usually the zoning is created in a way that is specific to an area. For example, downtown might have a very specific zoning and it may require a use permit. We have the DSP. Use per, use permits are very helpful when you're looking at like, when you have like commercial zoning or industrial zoning, where there's a whole range of different uses with different possibilities of impacts. And you get, you have to look at, so for example, you might have an auto repair facility on one hand, and you might have a church on another hand. And you do need to make certain findings about whether or not that use fits within that particular zoning district. When it comes to residential zoning, often we've already made that determination that these are the areas where that type of use is appropriate. And then we leap to design review where we look at circulation, architecture, all the other things that come with our design review. And our design review is really, I would refer to it as development review. Or because it's more than just design, our, our design review requires us to get into building architecture, landscaping, pedestrian and vehicle access, energy resource use, solid waste. And those are the primary issues. But pretty much it gets into how is that going to fit on the site? And how is it going to be compatible with the neighborhood around it? Okay, next slide, please. And again, this just, this comes right out of the zoning code. It just describes what the, how the, what the districts are. So in the NM, this is, it says the NM zoning district is applied to areas appropriate for a variety of housing types, including small lots, single family housing, and various types of multifamily housing. And NU zoning district is applied to areas appropriate for a variety of higher density housing types, including all types of multifamily housing, neighborhood serving, commercial, and other related compatible uses. So this is the definition of what those zoning districts are intended to be. Next slide, please. And then I know often I hear the questions of what are the other jurisdictions doing? And you'll see that Catati is an outlier by requiring use permits. When you get into, dig into the other jurisdictions zoning codes and you look at their zoning districts, and everybody does it differently. But when you look at their multifamily zoning districts across the board, these things are usually permitted. They also will have their design review requirements, but the use permit is typically not applied to multifamily housing in a multifamily zoning district. And thus, that is why we've And thus, that is why we've included the NM as well as the NU into this proposed ordinance. And next slide. And that really is the sum of my presentation, our recommendation is to recommend adoption of the attached ordinance to streamline multifamily housing permitting and remove barriers. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and hear any comments that you may have, thank you.
Well, thank you for that, I'll look to the council and see who'd like to lead off with questions. I see Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Sparks to start.
Thank you, Mary Lynn, JP, thanks, just one quick question on the lot coverage issue. If somebody chose to, to use a permeable parking or pavement surface, that would not count against lot coverage.
It's, I think it depends. It really depends on whether or not they can achieve the greater, greater, the stormwater infiltration needs that come out of, from the water quality control board. It's gone both ways, in some areas it has continued to be applied and and other areas it has been used as a way to get out of lot coverage. I will say that there's been a lot of discussion about how good permeable asphalt and surfaces are, and we're seeing, for example, the Water Quality Control Board recently said that we can no longer use permeable like gutters, curb and gutters, which has been a big application of that. And I think in general, people are starting to steer away from that because for example, if someone, we approved a home that had had permeable surface to it and then contributed it to it, there's no way for us to monitor and, you know, to make sure and ensure forever that 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 remains a permeable surface, so those, they require a lot of maintenance, they have to be swept. And they do clog up as well beneath the surface, it can, it has to be compacted, you can't have an uncompacted permeable surface, so. I would say the trend is, people are just taking another hard look at those permeables asphalt and permeable concrete really do what the, what, what people hoped it would do. I would say we look at that on a case by case basis, and whether or not it is an appropriate use.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, just a question about the discretionary process that would still remain in place, in the staff report, at one place it said that even, even if we remove the use permit, there would still be approval by either the planning commission or the city council. Can you just clarify a little, like what circumstances would send it to which body?
Sure. If it were, for example, the council recently approved the cottage housing ordinance, which could come in as a multifamily project, that by design is intended to go to the city council. But more traditionally, if there was any kind of subdivision, so if you, if it was a condominium subdivision or any subdivision of land, that has to be approved by city council or, or subdivision of airspace. So, so any kind of subdivision as a part of a project would elevate it to city council approval. Most multifamily apartments, for example, those would go to planning commission.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of questions. Along the same lines that Laura was speaking about, about the project approval will remain discretionary. Those words imply that we could do a hard yes or no. But the reality is, for design review, it's really only specific design type elements that we can try and discuss and negotiate. A use permit feels a lot more really a yes or no type thing, can, can you help me with that? It, it seems like discretion, the, the way it's termed, it sounds like we still have that discretion, but I think by nature of design review, we, not really.
I guess I would, I would disagree, I would say you do have discretion and you could say no. For example, what would be the reasons you would want to say no to a development? Let's just say you felt like the traffic impacts were too severe. And you didn't want to approve the project as, as it was, without some sort of mitigation for that. Well, our design review requires us to look at, you know, access as well as circulation. Another reason you may want to deny a project would be because perhaps you feel like it's too, too large of a structure and it's not compatible with the neighborhood. Well, those are design review, real decisions. The use isn't really not the, the, the thing that you would be reacting to. You know, you're probably going to be putting housing in a multifamily housing area. What you're going to be reacting to is all the findings that we have to make to approve design review, which is the architecture, the site planning, all the elements that you want to see a, as part of that development. So.
That, that helps a little bit because, you know, some of the the feedback that we get from the public, as you are well aware, really relates to traffic impacts, neighborhood compatibility and things like that. So what you're saying is those elements still are within our capabilities of negotiating.
That's right, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that, that, that's really helpful. And then can you help me a little bit with the the diagram you had having to do with the heights? And you showed an example of on a hill.
Sure, can we, perhaps we should go back to that.
Oh, sure, that, that'd be great.
I believe that was one, two, three, four, five. Like the, I think they're.
Great, yeah, thank you. So when you talk about it being on a hill, the way it was always explained to me, because I have had this issue before, is that it's always at the top height. So just because at the top front, it meets the thirty-five feet, it may be sixty or seventy feet down the slope at the top, but the way you explain it, it, it sort of goes down the hill and that isn't.
Yeah, well, imagine looking at the image, I think what you're, you, what you're, you're seeing, remember it goes up vertical, so. And then, and it's at that point, that vertical point, so imagine you were standing at the bottom of that hill, looking up. So that structure might have thirty-five feet of height to it. You can use, can you see how like the, that, that middle and then the, that most upper part, it just keeps getting taller?
Right.
Because it's stair steps down, so as it stair steps down the hill, if you're standing at the bottom of the hill, the structure itself may appear to be fifty feet, for example. But at any one point along the natural grade, it should not be exceeding, for example, and what we're talking about tonight, thirty-five feet.
Okay, so I think that's a change.
No, it's not a change, this, this, this image comes directly out of the zoning code.
Okay.
So we're not changing any, the way we measure height at, in any respect at all. We're simply changed, we're proposing to change, or actually you changed it when you adopted the general plan. The maximum height, but this is the way height is measured across the board, way it has always been measured in Kattati. And we're not proposing to change it, well, I should say since two thousand and five, when this zoning code was adopted, I don't know how it was done prior to that, but.
Yeah, because I do know that, you know, that there, there have been issues on hills before. And what I was told is it's from the top front. And that's where the measurement is taken and it doesn't matter on the downslope. And so this is different, so I, I like this because it, it does, you know, it does address that, so thank you for that. And then I had one more question based upon what Ben asked. My question is, all of those driveways in Kessing Ranch, are, are those considered permeable?
They are, so many of them are permeable.
Okay.
Yeah.
They look different and, and that's what I assumed they were, but I thought I would ask.
Yeah, the, the ones that are permeable almost looks like big Rice Krispie treats or something.
Right, exactly, dark Rice Krispie treats, yeah, okay, so that's what that. And you're saying that there's some question as to whether or not that really does what it.
I think that the water quality control boards are reevaluating the effectiveness of permeable surfaces like that. And then, an example of where it works very well, when you wouldn't even know where you were at, I'm getting a little sidebar, but around the Green Music Center is a lot of grass. And if you, what you may not be aware of is, that grass is really just right around the center is a emergency vehicle access road. And so that is actually a permeable surface which uses grass. And it's indistinguishable from the, the turf grass around it. That actually works pretty well. Because it's not something that's in continuous use, it actually grows vegetation. But that, that, it's that asphalt, the, the permeable asphalt stuff, I think is the one that is that, that the water control, excuse me, water quality control boards are reevaluating its effectiveness.
Great, thank you, thank you for that. That is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mary Lemon, thank you JP for the presentation. Do you know if we've had projects that have come in and said, we're not doing it because we need use permits?
I've not heard it said that way in particular, I have heard people challenge us when we, for example, our code, well, I've heard them say they didn't want the, the use permit to have to go to make those findings, but it was never a national deal breaker, it was just something that came out in, you know, basically debating the project and what, what had to be done to approve a project. For example, our code requires use permit findings for a density bonus. Well, that's contrary to density bonus law, and so we, we have gotten in arguments about requiring a use permit for the, for the granting of the density bonus. And we've had to back off of that. Because the state law is very clear that you can't, that's not a discretionary act, the granting of the density bonus itself. So, yeah.
When, so when you say the, the project review will remain discretionary.
Yeah.
By whom? I know.
Well, by, 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 it starts in the planning office, by, by the planning staff, but then ultimately all of the, planning staff doesn't have the ability to approve major changes, we can only approve maintenance for multifamily type projects. So those type of development changes, any development change which is visible, or actually any development change on a multifamily project, which is beyond maintenance, has to come to the planning commission for design review approval. Or if it was a major project that involves subdivision of the city council, so.
So I'm kind of hung up on the discretionary view on that. If, if a project wants to come in and planning says, well, no, you can't do that based on this particular provision, you know, then they can appeal that to planning or city council?
Well, we wouldn't, we could tell them that it wouldn't work and our recommendation to the planning commission would be denial in that case. Where we don't have the authority to tell someone, no, and we're going, you know, to just, to just get, we, we they make an application, pardon?
But you could say yes.
No, we can't say yes either, we have to schedule it to, for a hearing in front of the planning commission for its approval. Or recommendation to the city council.
And, and this may be a naive question, but I think it helps to have clarification. What's the process for a conditional use permit, or use permit?
As, as it, it would be the same, it would be bundled, let's just say, you know, under current, today's current, current conditions. They would, they would make the application. And when we presented it, we would have to make that we would make all the findings together, the design review findings and the use permit findings. You, when you, if you look at the staff reports, you'll see findings for all of that. So there's no separate process, it all gets done at the exact same time. And we, we, we look at the findings for the use permit, which are largely redundant to the findings that we make for the design review. I can't imagine a situation where we would say it passes design review, but we can't make the findings for a use permit. It'd be, it, you know, in a multifamily house, in a multifamily district, it's, it's difficult for me to see how that would happen, that kind of bifurcation. Actually, the opposite, where we could make the use findings, but we couldn't make the findings for a design review. Just because there's more findings to make with design review and they're much more specific.
So in the language, in the presentation, you talk about removing the barriers. So a use permit is considered a barrier?
I would call it a streamlining measure, more than a barrier. I think the barriers are like, the, the more the, the the, the, the limitations on land coverage and the limitations on height, I think those become barriers, because those, those are elements that make it, that affect the ability to make a project pencil, perhaps. So those to me are the barriers and by and then the, removing the use permit is more of a streamlining measure. It's, it's less time that staff would have to spend making those specific findings. It's, that's where, that's what I would view it as.
And, and what percent of time would you consider that for staff on a particular average project? Five percent, ten?
Yeah, yeah, that, that seems right, reasonable, it depends on the project, I suppose.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask these line of questioning is because it seems to me, and maybe it's just the perception, but it seems as if planning doesn't like use permits.
I would say that's not true, I think planning, I would say that's not, not necessarily true. We do try to find ways across the board where we can streamline things and make things easier for applicants where it seems appropriate. So if you're talking about commercial uses or industrial uses, in some cases, we have reduced the requirement. I don't think that, it's, that it's something that we, I, I don't know if I would agree with your statement.
Yeah, Councilmember, I would just add, I think JP touched on this, when you look at the intent of a zoning, so medium density residential or neighborhood urban residential, that's already saying, this is where multifamily housing goes. So kind of from the planning standpoint, I think getting to your point, the question about what should go there has already been answered by zoning it that way. So then, the, what, what planners think use permits are mainly intended for is to review how something's going to function and put limits on that use to make sure we would minimize the impacts of it. So his garage, his auto garage is a great example. Next to a potential church is a great example of those things. But in these zoning districts where we're already saying, this is a apartment or condominium zoning district, and residential uses are generally not seen as having high levels of impacts other than design and compatibility things, which are already addressed through the design review ordinance. And that's, I would say, why I, my perception is that this commitment was made in the general plan when it was adopted in two thousand and fifteen to reduce what's seen as a barrier from the development side of a use permit.
Thank you, Noah. Under the planning grant, the SB two, are, are we required to do this element?
To be reimbursed, we are.
So we've done three of them. And now we're looking at the fourth one.
Correct.
So theoretically, we could look at amending the codes for the the height or the um. Hardscape or whatever it may be without necessarily eliminating the use permit, correct?
Uh I, there's a couple of concerns I would voice, but theoretically, yes.
Well, go ahead and voice them because this is kind of important.
So so just stepping back, I I will say, so the city said in two thousand fifteen. In the general plan, we should do this. And actually, we are going to do this. The city's already committed to that in two thousand fifteen. Then when this SB two planning grant came about, staff said, well, hey, here's an opportunity. To get some additional funding for something that the state has said cities should do. And we've already also said we were going to do it. So we saw it as kind of low hanging fruit from our perspective. Because we've committed to doing it in our housing element. The concern that I want to, so there's one thing about getting reimbursed or not, that's a concern and, uh you know, we've already budgeted for our staff time, so that's one thing. But I'm very concerned about getting our housing element certified. In the next cycle, which as we all know is coming up in January. If we, if I go to the uh state and say, hey, we committed to doing this in two thousand fifteen and we chose not to do it. But also please certify my housing element where I'm committing to do all these things for the next eight years. I I that is concerning to me about jeopardizing the ability to get our housing element certified. If our housing element is not certified, then the state, actually a judge, becomes. The decider of housing projects in Kattati. And the city attorney may have some additional comments on that, but. So my goal is to ensure that does not happen to the best of my abilities by helping. Bring decisions forward that and explaining all the various factors that allow you all to make decisions fully informed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lemon.
All right, thank you. So let's see, I have a few questions for you JP. So let's start right at the beginning with the, on page five seventy eight with the. In general, the things that are being requested to be changed, I have no issues with the changes being requested for the. Neighborhood medium density zoning distance, that's a pretty minor change. I wondered if you could take me through the changes that are being requested in the neighborhood. Urban zoning districts from sixty to seventy-five percent. That's a twenty-five percent increase. That seems rather large, so. Walk me through that because that kind of makes me a little hesitant. I mean, obviously. There's good reasons. Years of planning in this community with thought towards the community that set that initial sixty. So tell me what's changed, why we should move it. That large a degree.
Well, the fifteen percent increase is something that um I did not give a whole lot of thought to. Because it was something that the city council had already adopted as a policy. Back in two thousand fifteen as part of the general plan, but. Um as by, as I said in my report, we have heard from folks. Um when they've been designing projects, that part of the problem that they have run into in meeting our minimum densities. Is that our land coverage. Limitations prevent them from from building large enough structures and providing parking areas sufficient. To meet our, to meet our standards. So they they kind of get in a rock and a hard spot where. They need to meet density or they need to get the project to a level that it can pencil. But they're running into our land coverage standards. Um and that becomes a limiting factor. In in their, in their ability to get a project uh making a viable project.
Okay, and I ask these things because it's been mentioned a few times. Indeed, we ran through some of these issues and. They didn't really tweak any antennas uh back in. Twenty fifteen, but pardon the pun, the landscape has changed since then a little bit. We spent the better part of the last decade, actually, longer than that. Working, I think, pretty effectively to reduce duplication, extra requirements, things that did make it hard for projects to go forward this town. Even though it's a town that prides itself on, it likes being small. We recognize that a lot of our mechanisms were built up in such a way to make it almost difficult to do a project. And so I think we've all moved a long way. If you picture us being in some polar place, we've already moved. A long ways away from where we started. And I think there was a willingness to do that. But since then, there's been so many changes, particularly a new laws could from the state. Taking away local control um. Over zoning, over building, um allowing people to come in 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 areas where you have a specific plan that goes no higher than, say, three stories. To just by right come and put in a five story building. Or of course SB nine, which everybody talks about, uh and the public's only just beginning to become aware of. So that's why I look at this with a little more caution than I did a few years ago now. I I'm perhaps I'm sensitized, but. That leads me to asking you. One more time, I know you've already gone through this, forgive me. But the design review findings versing the use permit findings. I see a lot of similarities, but I don't see them. Honestly, exactly the same. I don't know if they're truly completely duplicative. And I say that because. Design review seems to be based around architecture. Um aesthetics, local codes. Whereas. Use permits allow us to talk about things like public interest. General compatibility and having things more general. Where versus less, more specific as we are in design review. Actually does give us some flexibility. And I ask about this because I do share some of the concerns of one of the planning commissioners who worried about. Removing that use permit. I'll just say off the top of my head, I see a lot of areas in the NU areas where I'd be completely comfortable talking about a three story building and any other things are being asked for. That I don't think that's an issue, but I do see some areas where NU's bump right up to. NM areas where they're right behind or right abutting. These are areas where I would like to have that public meeting and the council say and the general use permit findings to be able to make sure. That that is a. Something that is compatible and serves public interest. Uh so speak to me, you know, because I looked at it and I'm not seeing them exactly the same. I I really do think. That there's a little more flexibility uh with a use permit. Do you see that at all or am I missing something?
Um I I I I would give the same answer that I gave to um. This is council member Harvey, which is, I think when you would be reacting to a multifamily project. The things you would be reacting to are covered by design review uh findings that we have to make. On, on on another note, which is. Little, you you touched on it and it's something that Noah and I struggle with daily. Um if we don't find ways to meet our Rena numbers and, you know, the things we try to bring before the council. Um are tiptoeing into, you know, areas where we think we can find ways to to improve housing. If we don't, then we're going to be forced to approve without any discretion. Uh development projects. And that is, that is like the the threat that hangs over our head is if we don't find ways. To get the development, even though we don't actually develop housing. We have to come up with programs that do get us to the point where we meet our regional housing needs.
Well, let me ask you, but because I understand that concern and I'm glad you're worried about it because I share that worry. I don't think, I don't think we're alone in that. I think all cities do. But we essentially met our Rena numbers last time. We were. That close to getting all of it. The thing that eluded us, which eludes, I understand, most cities is the very low income numbers, which are, of course, the hardest to find funding for. And we had a project lined up that couldn't make its funding stack, even though we put a significant amount of in lieu. Housing money that we had saved just for that purpose. But had it passed, that would have covered all our numbers for that last cycle. And if it goes through coming up again soon, which we shall see. That would make, I believe, all of our numbers for this next cycle. So I had understood in past presentations that actually. We've done pretty darn good in terms of reading numbers and we're on track probably with our existing. Areas we have to develop to meet them. Is something changed?
No, no, we have done good, but the way the law is structured now, doing good isn't good enough. There's that this, the the trigger for like an SB thirty-five project, a non-discretionary by right type project. It it still exists, even if you didn't make it in only one category, that's a difficult category to make.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned SB thirty-five because if that's exactly the type of thing, it has me to position where I'm. Less open to seeding things if I don't have to. Um that's the one. That allows people to come in and, for example, in the middle of our town, build a five story building, maybe bigger. Uh and there's not a thing that could be done about it in theory, uh just because we were unable. To hit a few numbers that most other cities can't do, but I'm digressing. So one last question.
I would like to.
Let me finish this thought if I could with. Thank you. Because we're right, we're talking about uh whether was a difference between use permit findings and. Design review. So if if they aren't that different, then if you truly, they're both the same thing. Then how can it be a barrier if they're generally bundled? If essentially, once you pass one, you've got the other and we do them at the same time as a bundled process. If that gives us a little extra flexibility in those weird case situations for an occasional project. How is that a problem? I I get that a lot of developers would prefer to. Minimalize as much as possible, but I don't know if I, I certainly don't see it as a barrier. I mean, is that truly such a big issue?
I would say, no, it's it's not a huge issue. I think that is partially why. At staff, we were okay with making this change because we didn't see it. I think you're looking at it as, we didn't see it as that having the use permit granted us anything more. Really than what we get through the design review. So. I I don't.
From my position, I don't see it. This means it comes through us. And that's, that's my concern. So just my experience in recent years, that's the type of thing I'd like to see. So. So Noah, you had something you wanted to share and then I'll wrap my comments up quickly because I've gone on a while.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so so to your point, they are distinctly different in the eyes of the law, which I think is is an important uh point to make. Because uh so the 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 findings that JP keeps keeps referencing. A city has to say a project does X, Y, and Z in order to grant this entitlement, right? So that discretionary approval, that use permit or that design review. Um but I think the point that JP's making is that. If there was a project that was just a, you know, a terrible project, was not compatible. And the and did not fit to the point where staff was recommending denial or the council or planning commission felt that they needed to vote against it. The findings required for design review are there to allow you to do so. But I think to your point, the, again, the question about can multifamily go in these areas is taken off the table. Yes, when there's no use permit, the the use is a is permitted. So the the review portion is just discretionary. But I I want to make a, and I'm going to ask the city attorney, I hope he's, I hope he's ready for this because I had not uh brought it up. Because we've already committed to these things in the general plan. If someone came to us and said, I'm going to do this project, and I said, well, you need a design review and a use permit. And they would point it out and said, actually, your general plan says I don't need a use permit. And it also says I'm allowed to go to seventy-five percent lot coverage. The general plan takes precedence over our zoning code. From the staff perspective, this is just housekeeping. So I'd like the city attorney to chime in on that if he's available to look at those things. Because I I completely understand the perspective of the council and absolutely in light of the the state legislative changes. But the point I'm trying to make is is um. This is this streamlining effort, as we're calling it, is just basically cleaning up things we've already said are the case in Kattati.
And that was it. And and my point is, from my perspective, at least, that was at a different time. I understand that. I would like to hear from the city attorney on this, though.
Of course, I totally understand that.
Okay, uh I think I have about three comments. So so one is, I I mean, just looking at the table that JP put together, maybe it's a matrix. Uh with the use permit and design review findings. I would agree with JP that um. That you have a lot of discretion under the design review uh findings to deny a project. Right? I I think the, I think the way council member Harvey put it was um. We can't just say yes or no to projects, you know, what I don't like it uh isn't a basis for uh denying the permit. But you have a lot of discretion under the the set of uh permit findings that are required for designer view. I think the broadest of that, that probably the biggest distinction is that one of the use permit findings is about use. Um that that the proposed use, in particular multifamily, would be. Compatible with the existing and future land uses in the vicinity. That's the key distinction. But as Noah points out, and I guess I'm moving on to my second point. The general plan sort of, I I it does seem like it already determined that these uh multifamily uses. Are allowed in these land use districts. And you said in your housing element that you were going to follow through on all these things. Um so you you have a situation, I'm not certain that your zoning is inconsistent with the general plan. But it's pretty far along to being inconsistent with the general plan. And the third thing I would point out is that the Housing Accountability Act gives developers a right to. Um to pursue residential projects. Um that are consistent with the objective land use standards. Of the city's general plan and and zoning. Um and so to the extent that any of these findings are discretionary, a developer could say, look, guys. Uh you have to approve this project and only apply the objective standard. So. So in some cases. A lot of our discussion may be irrelevant if a developer asserts that rights under the Housing Accountability Act.
I'm sure there must be some caveats to go with that, but I'll take that as it is.
All right, listen. The biggest caveat is that uh you can, you can deny a project if it has health and safety. Uh concerns, but but beyond that, there there aren't a lot of caveats.
Well, we're not going to get into asking you to define health and safety because we could go a long ways, but we'll pass on that. Thank you, Mr. Barker. Real quick question, uh. I, did I understand we're not talking about changing the parking standards tonight?
That's correct. That's not part of this ordinance.
Okay, well, I'll let that go. And the last thing I want to ask in light of the discussion, so it sounds like uh. In our interest, at least from my perspective, and our interest in doing our best to work with. Developers and do the things we needed to do, we back ourselves into a corner. In this new landscape of two thousand twenty-two, and there might be not an easy way to get back out of that, fair enough. Could we not require that? All these things that come from design review, whether. Even if they go to planning, that they finally come to the council for final approval. To at least keep whatever small lever of discretionary approval that may be available in a project available. For some of those use cases where we have a potentially large three story, which is. Pretty large and unexpected in many neighborhoods of this town, particularly if it bumps right up into. A neighborhood medium density, which is typically nowhere near that size.
So let me, let me clarify. So planning staff would not be the ones making decisions. We would.
I understand that and then you would go to the planning commission.
So you you're you're requesting that that be elevated, that you want to, you want to elevate these projects to city council projects? Is that your comment?
That was a, that that was a question, if that was doable, if there were any huge problems you saw with that, because would at least solve the concern. That I'm hearing from at least a few of us about the absolute evisceration of any discretionary control over land use in Kattati.
I think I would defer to Noah and and and. John Baker on that.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Noah.
The the process for each discretionary action is laid out in the code right now, so. Design review and the use permit, both are decided by the planning commission currently. So those do not go to the city council. A use permit does not go to the council.
They're appealable, though, so.
Both of those get a, yeah, both of those on appeal would go to the city council.
And the council could amend the code to 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 require certain permits to go to the council.
That that's.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. That was my next question, yes.
Right. So let let me just say one thing, which is, I I hate to offer another caveat, but there is a. SB three thirty, which limits the city council's discretion to amend. Uh zoning ordinances and general plans in a way that that reduces. Density. I don't think a procedural change like that would be subject at three thirty, but we'd have to take a look at it.
I'm not sure how we reduce density.
I don't think it would either, but I I just want to say that.
Stretch. Well, that answers my question and that was kind of where I was leaning, so. I see one more hand raised from council member Sparks. If you have. I see one more hand raised from Councilmember Sparks. If you have one more question before I open up the public hearing, I'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, thank you. The question I had was just related to Councilmember or to Mayor Landman's question. Just what would the, in Steph's opinion, what would the consequences be if we elevated the some of these use permits to the council level? Do you think that would add more uncertainty to the process for developers and and possibly more time and expense? And I mean, I'm just, if we're introducing that to the conversation, I would like to know what some of the potential downsides might be to something like that.
Well, I would, right away, assuming that the project could have been approved by planning commission, I would assume we would bring it to the planning commission for a recommendation prior to bringing it to city council. So you are talking about, you know, probably close to an additional month in the review, as well as the expense of going to an another hearing before the city council. And just, you know, I couldn't read a developer's mind, but based on the conversation I had with developers as we're going through the cottage housing project, yes, they do find more uncertainty going to the city council.
I would just clarify, more uncertainty with the two-step process.
Right, right, excuse me.
Vice Mayor Harvey, since we've opened another round, go ahead.
I I think along those same lines, I think that while we are somewhat aware of the bills that are that have come down and somewhat aware of what some of the ramifications are, it is extremely obvious that the public is totally unaware. And the more opportunity that we allow to educate and allow the public to comment on projects that come through, I think in the long run, we are better off. If we say that it's only going to go to the planning commission, and most people don't even you know, pay attention at all to the planning commission meetings, and that was their one and only opportunity to voice an opinion. In a public view, they would view that they did not get an opportunity to comment on a project. So I would be leaning more towards the way the mayor was saying that it giving the public the most opportunity to voice their concerns, I think as a community, we're better off. And some things we're going to, we're going to have to say, well, that's what the law says, and we just have to follow it. But at least that gives an opportunity to educate on that stuff. So.
All right. Thank you for that. And I'll just make a quick additional. You know, I would agree. I think that adding an extra meeting does add at least a small modicum of uncertainty. Time, you're going to wait another month, certainly. Expense, maybe, although I think it would be probably relatively minimal. I would ask staff offhand, do we know of any project that's failed because they told us that one extra meeting was too much? It was the straw that broke the camel's back. I would suspect not, but but I do agree. So I I don't think it's a barrier, I think is what I'm trying to say. I see it as something you don't want to do if you're a developer. I agree with that, but I don't see it as a barrier at all. I see it as just an inconvenience that goes with the job. And speaking of jobs, I I agree with the vice mayor that elected representatives should wait, local elected representatives should weigh in on these things and be able to talk to the public and listen to their concerns. At least as long as the state California allows us to. So with that, let's see here. We have our questions. It is time to open the public hearings. So I'll ask our city clerk if we could open the public hearing and see what comments we might have.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Stephanie Picard Bowen, please go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Landman, Vice Mayor Harvey, council members and staff. My name is Stephanie Picard Bowen. And I am the operations and development director for Generation Housing, where we lead the movement for more, more diverse and more affordable housing. You're here tonight to express our support and gratitude for the efforts you are making to reduce barriers to developing multifamily housing. While we'd love you to be even more bold, this is a great start, and we applaud the progress. Your qualified staff has presented you with carefully balanced local control with the urgency for our local housing needs. The more local jurisdictions can be progressive in their housing ideas, the less likely the state will impose more blunt instruments that stifle local control. As you likely already know, multifamily build developments help combat climate change. Multifamily homes have significantly lower greenhouse gas emissions than single-family homes and further reduce emissions indirectly by reducing vehicle miles traveled. This particular council has been innovative and willing to make positive changes in housing policy. And this is yet another opportunity to put policy in place that could transcend your tenure on the council. As always, thank you for your service and have a great evening.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. So let's see, I have to rethink this council. Originally, I thought we had a list of about four or five items that I was going to ask you all to weigh in on individually to see where you at in each item. But what I'm hearing, unless and somebody may disagree and wish to take these individually, but I'm hearing that this is kind of something we've been very neatly boxed into. So I guess I'd like to hear what your thoughts are, and I see Councilmember Moore, please go first.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I think it would be easier to look at these items individually versus a package deal on there. And secondly, the reason I think that there's a concern here is we've had previous planning directors who have been given a nickname. And the nickname was, oh, we missed that. Because every time you'd ask them about a particular project or something, they'd be like, oh, we missed that. And after a while, I started calling that particular planning director, oh, we missed that. How are you today? This, I think, component of having it go to the council with a use permit allows for just another set of eyes. And as you know, we can tear something down pretty easily and make it much more complicated. Not that that's really the desire, but if you have a better project in the end and you don't miss something, then it's it's a much better project, and much more people are satisfied with that. So I would prefer if you were able to break that down, Councilmember or Mayor Lemon.
I'll think I'll leave that to everybody's discretion. Anybody who wants to go through the items one by one, just so we know where we're all at and what our sticking points might be and what our areas of agreement are. Please go ahead and do that, or if you just want to comment in the package as it exists, that's fine, too. John, since you already have your hand and mic open, if you if you're ready and comfortable, if you want to go through your areas of concern with the items. And I believe they're listed pretty comfortably in page five seventy-eight of the packet.
I can do that.
Yeah, they kind of cover it there, I think.
I can do that. Item one, I have no concerns with. Item two, I think it's a little much, but I can live with it. Item three, I don't think is a very controversial issue. We're not talking a significant amount. But item four, I I would like to I would disagree with that one.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's see. The next hand I saw, but Councilmember Sparks, your hand was up. Did you, and it's down. Did you want to wait a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry. I put it down when I thought we were redoing our format, just to wait and see.
No, you can apply any direction you want. Have that.
Okay.
For you next.
Oh, I should go now or Councilmember?
Please go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So I'll go through the list. Items one and two, I feel like we have already committed to based on the general plan, so we have no problem going forward with those. Similarly, with item, I feel I supportive of all of one, two, and three. Item four, I am fully supportive of removing the use permit requirement, and I've been convinced of this by two things. One, I was looking through the other types of things that we require use permits for in residential zones, and they are interesting things that are not necessarily what you would first think of when you think of a residential area, like a a care facility for the elderly residential care with eleven or more clients. I'm just reading down what we require use permits for. Accessory retail and services. I guess that's in the retail portion, but there are all these different, oh, boarding house, there are these different types of uses that are not just residential, and those are the types of things we seem to require use permits for. So as Steph was describing, you know, that we've already decided based on our zoning that resident, that multifamily residential belongs in these higher density zones. That just makes, that makes sense to me. It makes sense that it's not the use that we're objecting to. We're not objecting to people living in homes in the residential zone. It's the design of the project that we might have concerns about. And that does, that just made a lot of sense to me that like we we have that control within the design review. The use permits about about deciding whether that use is consistent, that having people living in a residential zone is consistent, and we've already decided that with the zoning. So that that's just how I'm thinking about it. It seems to me like that even if it's only saving ten percent of staff time, that's ten percent of staff time. That's that's a good efficiency. It's a good way to just save everyone time, all the developers and staff, and just simplify the processing. The more we can simplify it and streamline it, the better to me. With that, and I don't think that it it gives up control based on the way that process was described. I think there were some concerns coming up about, you know, if we give up the use permit, then this is only going to go to the planning commission and not the council, but I thought that it went to the planning commission anyway. So maybe someone can can confirm to me whether that would change anything. And then the second thing that convinced me that this makes sense is we seem to be the only city in Sonoma County that does this. And so if it's been a major problem in other cities, I'm curious why none of, why, or maybe Steph could tell me, are there other cities that are considering going back to a use permit or or adding any use permit requirement for some of their zones? Because it seems like we're such an outlier. It 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 just doesn't seem to me that it's causing a major issues to remove issue to remove that use permit requirement in other cities. So that's why I I'm pretty supportive of going ahead and making this change as recommended by staff.
All right. Thank you, Council, Councilmember Ford. I saw your hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Similar to Councilmembers Moore and Sparks, I'm I'm, I have no trouble with with one through three. It seems like most of our discussion is around number four and and the added on possibility of switching who looks at at these design review discretionary reviews. So the my my sense is that we do much better when we try to lay out what it is we want in an area and and as objectively as possible, name what characteristics we want to see for development in an area. And I worry a lot when we try to preserve project by project discretion for whatever five people happen to be on council at the time to insist on their vision of what goes in that spot without a a higher level. You know, instead of the higher level discussion about absent a particular project, what we want to see in that spot. And that's what I see. This this move is in the direction of by zoning these things, and Emmer and you, we've said these spots are appropriate for multifamily housing. And since that, as City Attorney Barker pointed out, the primary difference between the the use permit finding and the design review finding is the finding that the use is appropriate to the site. We've handled that by zoning. Zoning is what when we've labeled them, and Emmer and you, we've said multifamily housing is appropriate, is an appropriate use here. So that removes the need for a use permit. Separately, the issue of whether use permits, these use permits come to to planning commission or city council. I'm sorry, the design review comes to those things. Having served on planning commission for, I don't know, eight or ten years, the planning commission is not sort of running out of time to do its work. We have a, the planning commission has a lot of canceled meetings because we're not overrun with projects in our small town. And that the effect of moving the requirement for design review from planning commission to city council would give planning commission even less to do. And that's more in their expertise than ours, I I would argue. They have a lot of expertise in in doing design review sorts of tasks. So and and I do believe that adding a a second step to the process, actually requiring them to go to both planning commission and city council is a significant added uncertainty and our commission, our council does not have a history of always rubber stamping what planning commission says. And if I were a developer, as I have been in this town, I would, that would give me pause about developing here. So I think that sort of going back and and having to report to the state as we try to get a new housing element approved, that we've just added a layer of review for for multifamily. I don't think that's something I'm willing to say, sure. Thanks.
All right. Any more final comments from anybody? Look, once, twice, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Right, I guess, I guess it's my turn to weigh in. I am okay with one, two, and three. I I can accept those. I appreciate the discussion around use permit versus design review. I think based upon JP's description, I think the things that have been brought to us in the past concerns of the public, I always come at it from the concerns of the public. I've been in enough of these meetings to to know that while we don't have a lot of folks come a lot of the times, when we have projects that come before us, that is the time because it affects people. They do come out and express their opinions, and I am usually wanting to hear what those opinions are. And so the fact that we might possibly have to have a planning commission meeting and a council meeting and providing opportunity for the public to weigh in, that is really where where I come from. Not that I don't think that the planning commission can do their job, not that I think that the council, you know, does or does not have a better way in on that. But I'm at the point where I want to hear what the public has to say, and I want to give them every opportunity because in the past, if we don't give them the amount of opportunity to weigh in, I I've seen it both ways. I mean, Cessing Ranch, we had hundreds of people that that came and expressed opinions. We even had a small little five housing process, project up over by city hall, and there was a whole ton of people that came out for that. And it's giving the people the opportunity to speak, say what their thoughts are, and then talking to them about what is or isn't possible. Ninety percent of the time, the things that they're asking for are not things that we can do anything about. You know, as Councilmember Ford expressed, you know, a lot of this stuff is already laid out in the zoning codes and and what's allowed and not allowed. So people can express that that's what they want, but that then that gives us the opportunity to educate them that there are certain things that we can ask for and certain things that we can't. So I I would be open to having a two-step meeting process, not for turning things away, but really allowing public transparency for some of these things because they are going to get denser and denser and denser. And 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 I think people need to understand that the character of our community is going to change, and some of it, we have control over it. A lot of it, we're not going to have control over it. So so I I think that's what I feel about that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, let's see. I'm going to make my, but I'm going to wait, and I see a hand again from Councilmember Sparks. If you have one more comment quickly to make.
Yes, thank you. I I feel like you need to make a new comment because we're talking now more about adding a new requirement, which wasn't initially in the packet. And I wasn't really expecting to discuss tonight. So I'm, I feel very uncomfortable with the direction this is going because it's inconsistent with our. So I'm, I feel very uncomfortable with the direction this is going because it's inconsistent with our general plan land use element. The action LU4A states that we're going to. Perform a review that may consider methods to streamline and simplify the process. And opportunities to reduce redundancies and delays. And what we're discussing right now is unstreamlining and complicating the process and an opportunity to increase the delay. So we are completely going backwards from what we said we were going to do in our general plan. Um, so I I don't feel comfortable with this. I I had not anticipated that that we would be discussing going in this direction. On this action item. So that's one thing. And then. Another side of this that I I just feel morally compelled to bring up is that. We have a massive housing crisis. I know you all appreciate that and know that, and I'm preaching to the choir, but. We don't have very many things that we as a council can do to bring down housing prices, right? We don't have the authority to, we we don't build housing, we don't set prices. But what we can do is put a process in place that minimizes the. Time that it takes to get a process to get a a housing development through. While making sure that the public has a chance to give input and we have a chance to consider it, but. By adding another layer, and I I think Councilmember Ford made a really good point that if we're taking this off the plate of the. Planning Commission and onto the play of the council. It's much more difficult to get things scheduled on the city council agendas than on the planning commission agendas. So that means that it's going to increase not just by one meeting, but it could potentially increase by several months. How long it takes to get something through if we can't get it on to a meeting during a busy time of the year. And I do think that this is going to have a real. Effect greater than what you might be anticipating. On a developer's willingness to build housing in Katari when there's so much more uncertainty. We we have to own that. If we make a decision to add a new level of approval, we have to own the fact that that might reduce the housing that gets built here. And that might increase the cost of housing. It's one small thing that we have in our control is to 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 try to keep the cost of housing down by keeping the processes streamlined and efficient. And if we go in the opposite direction, we have to own that our piece of raising housing prices. I don't feel comfortable with that.
All right, thank you. So. Good round of comments. This is helpful. Uh, I'm gonna make my comments now. I want to respond because actually, Councilman, before you gave me a good thought that kind of jumped out to me and struck me up. You're right, we don't have a history of rubber stamping, but we get from the planning commission. I don't think it's as bad as that sounds, frankly, and I don't think you meant it that way. Uh, most of the time we do, um, but from time to time, we have veered sometimes sharply from what we've got from the planning commission. And that may not be a bad thing, and that may actually point out why what I'm suggesting could be a substantial benefit. I'm not saying take something away from the planning commission. I think you're right that they have a specific expertise and focus. On areas uh, that are well suited to what they do, and I think it would be. Harmful to the end product to bypass that. What I'm saying is we do with so many things, usually things of import. And let's face it, we are all agreeing that housing and development and all the issues surrounding it, good and bad, or of import. Uh, that these things. Might be well served to do them as well as possible. So I'm not saying taking away from planning, I'm saying just giving the final approval. Or ratification of that recommendation to the council, and I'm saying that for those. Odd cases that do pop up when somebody wants to put something that's a problematic design. I agree. The uses in these areas, we agreed to that 2015, and I still agree with that. I think these are appropriate uses for these areas. But I also believe, and I certainly learned it recently, that people can. Use reduced controls to come in and all of a sudden come up with something that we didn't foresee that could be problematic, for example, neighbors in oh. Some of the NM zones, if back up or next to any zones like Olaf behind Lund Hill. Or the whole neighborhood behind Pete's for that example. So I I do feel that way. Um, I think. That. We haven't really. And I'm certainly not suggesting that we're not making this more difficult. We're doing what we were asked to do in our design, in our. General plan to sit and discuss ways of making this more streamlined, and we're tossing out, it appears. Or at least that's the direction we seem to be heading. Because it appears there's a little choice in the matter of tossing out the ability to have a use permit for just designer view. That cuts that in half. The small additional hurdle, and I wouldn't even call it hurdle step of going to one more meeting and waiting 30 more days. I don't see as terribly problematic, and I and I can't see that as a. Negative thing that's going to get big housing whatsoever in this community, but I do think it does give us. That elected oversight, which is a real special thing. I think planning definitely has specialized expertise in the area. Certainly one more general, but one other difference too is we're the last voice of the elected people in the city, and that's why we should weigh in it. I I agree, we should have standard standards to go work from Mr. Ford, but I think I hear just a little bit. I have some comfort with whatever five we may draw now in the future, no matter how much we may disagree. And no matter how long and stressful our discussions could be at times, we get a better end product out of it almost every time, I think. Just about every time. So it's a good thing. So where I'm at, uh. I was fine with one. I can live with two. I really liked what we originally had for number three. Uh, a use permit for 35 feet or. If 40% of that units would be affordable to extremely low and very low income housing, you want to try some low and very low income housing. I thought that was a great way to do it. But if the council wishes to say okay to that, and that's what I'm hearing from most of you, I could go there. Uh, the use permit, it's not a place I wanted to go. I could go along with it, but I very much would like to see the addition of final approval for the council on these projects. I could vote yes to that. If it's proposed without that, I'd vote no, and it's not that I think these other things are bad, but that's just a just a sticking point for me. That's all. So with that, I'm open to further discussion or motions or whatever the council would like to do. Councilmember Ford.
Well, I just want to respond from the perspective of somebody who has developed a multifamily project in this town. That the addition of a second level of discretionary review by a public body is a significant hurdle. It is not simply another step. It is much more work than a bundled use permit and design review. Uh, single review at the planning commission, which is the current status, unless there's a subdivision required. In which case, in either case, it would come to to city council. So. So what you're proposing is adding a significant hurdle, I argue, and from my experience having developed in this town. It's a significant hurdle to multifamily development, and I think it will be read as such by anybody at the state reviewing our housing element.
Well, that's certainly not the intention, but I take your point. Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Um. Councilmember Ford, I I need to ask you a clarifying question, if I may. When you said that you had, as a developer in the town. And you had to bring your project from planning to city council. Um, wasn't your project already kind of an exception in the fact that it was initially zoned commercial there? And then what is known to allow or?
So so what I said was adding an extra discretionary review would be a substantial hurdle. I didn't say that my project was an exact example of what we're talking about here. In fact, where I live, we developed under uh. What was it called? It's doesn't doesn't exist anymore. The. Yeah, PUD, right. It was a PUD, which we don't have anymore. So so my specific example. Um, we've come a long way since then in in our planning department. Don't get me wrong. Back then, the planning department said they were doing us a favor by getting us through um, entitlements in two years instead of four. So we've come a long way since then. Don't get me wrong.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't really think of it as an impediment to development. Um, I don't know that we have a stack of five and 10 developers in line waiting to submit their projects here. And they're gonna go, damn, now we have to go before the council? Yeah, I just don't see that happening. And maybe I'm wrong. Maybe we do have multi-developers ready to come in.
All right. Just clarify a little bit, Mayor London. My my point is that. Every, every round of discretionary review entails some risk of additional conditions or additional. Things that have to be negotiated. And uh, the the different, when we we had to go through design review, planning commission and city council. And each of those levels impose their own preferences on our project, and it was purely preferences. And that's my worry that we're we're expecting to give multiple opportunities for. Um, review bodies, planning commission and city council. A whack at the, I I'm mixing my metaphor. So anyway, you know what I mean, like.
And I think that's a fair thing. I I would agree that that may well have happened at times. Other times, though. I would argue, and I think we've done it here even in just our short year together. Sometimes the result of this is a better own, some of those last minute, I forget the term you use for requirements, let's just call it that. Uh, may in fact be good ones that are beneficial for the community. So I guess to me. The bottom line, this comes out, it's a balance. The council will have to decide. The possibility of something, whether it's a step or a pediment or a hurdle or anything in between. Versus the benefit of more citizen input and elected oversight, having to be able to look at something and. Hopefully change it for better or even potentially perhaps just being a delay and adding a preference. That's. We'll put all those things up there because that's the balance, and I take your point. Uh, you make it passionately and very well reasoned. I still lean more in the other direction, but I'm not arguing against what you're saying at all. Um. So at this point, unless somebody has something new to offer, I think I'd be looking for motions. Um, Councilmember Sparks.
Just one real quick new point is I I wanted to mention the the cost that when you um, incre- add a new discretionary step. That can definitely impact the financing, the developers um, financing costs that they incur. They might actually get worse interest rates um, based on the uncertainty associated with the project. So it it can have ripple effects that affect the overall cost um, of the unit when it's sold to a homeowner. Uh, so I I don't want us to lose track of that, that adding additional discretionary hurdles for. For some hurdle, additional discretionary steps does increase the final cost of the housing, and I feel like we need to be doing things to reduce cost of housing while increasing.
Let me ask you a clarifying question because I think that could occasionally be the case. But should we not, as representatives of the general public, also? Be representing the interest of the general public, even if sometimes it works in a way that might be problematic for a particular project, even if it adds a little extra time. Or if something they might feel is an encumbrance that perhaps the majority of it feels good. Wouldn't you agree sometimes there's some value in that?
I absolutely agree that there's value to oversight and there's value to us having um. Public input and having some control over projects. I I feel that um, entrusting the people on the planning commission with that design review process. And then looking at ways that we can improve our outreach to improve the engagement at the existing. Um, for word, we're not getting enough engagement because I I totally understand Councilmember Harvey's concern that people. People don't necessarily come out for the planning commission meetings. They don't know what's going on. So I I'd say let's look at that. Let's look at how we can get getting improved engagement at those meetings rather than adding a costly new step. Um, so that we can do the important oversight that we need to do without increasing the cost of the units.
All right. Well, we've aired this out pretty thoroughly. I think we have left no stone unturned, and I think that's a good thing. Uh, do I hear a motion from anybody tonight?
Mayor Lam, just if I may, before the motion, I just want to clarify. Uh, so items one through three are from staff perspective, essentially implementing commitments made in the general plan. Option four is something that staff is proposing that is absolutely not in the general plan and. Uh, whoever makes a motion um, is free to take or leave that. Uh, changing the design review decision-making process is a completely new ordinance that has to go back through the process, just to clarify.
So so let me understand this then. I had understood that the addition of NM was something that staff handed the Western General Plan, or you're saying all of item four on. Packet page 578. Is not, we're not required by your understanding of the general plan to do that?
Yeah, I can clarify. So items one, two and three are things that are are cleanup for the most part. Item four can be divided into two pieces. One is the NM, the use permit in the NM, which is not. Discussed in in the in the general plan direction. The element to add NU is uh, one of the program commitments that we said that we would take on. So the part that staff kind of went above, not not so much above and beyond because we took the broader direction, but. The what we interpreted affects the NM. So if you were to look at package page 592, for example. Um, which is. One of the, one of the uh, elements of the ordinance. If you wanted to make a motion to say, let's do what the general plan direct directed, and then so that basically under NU, those would become permitted. But NM, we would leave as use permit, use permit. Um, and that would be consistent. I think that would be consistent with what's done in the general plan. It would not be going that additional step that staff chose to do, which would, which is to go permitted in the NM district. I hope I'm making sense.
No, that that's clear. Thank you. So.
And we can, we can line item this out the way that you want. It's structured in a way to give you the discretion to. Thumbs up, thumbs down on any of these items, and then when we bring it back for the second reading, we'll make any adjustments that the council wants to make. But Noah's correct, we can't bring the the amended review process tonight. That's.
No, no.
So we all. Mr. Mayor, I want to, I I want to just quickly draw something to your attention about uh, what what JP just said on packet page 579. The policy concerning the use permit, it is there, it's program 3.9. It doesn't actually require you to change the NU zone permitted versus use permit. It says you're supposed to monitor it and consider whether making that change is feasible. So even in the NU, it's not. That's, that's the way I read it. It's not not required.
Read two six.
Yeah, two six is a little stronger.
Why don't we give our city attorney a moment to look at that? While we ponder this new information and and Mr. Barker, go ahead, take a look at that and get back to us.
Well, that's true. The there those those programs seem to be somewhat inconsistent with one another. Um, so so I would, I I would grant what what JP said is is accurate because what two six says is that it will be removed.
So our general plan is inconsistent with itself, but we're going to go with the worst case scenario. All right. Uh, so it appears that we do have council, what we're currently discussing, plus we have the ability, if council desires. To drop the requirement, drop the removal of the use permit requirement uh. For NM, uh, need your me- neighborhood medium density housing if we wish from item four. So I see some hands. Uh, Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Um, if it's appropriate, I would make a motion that we um. Take a vote on the first three items. And uh, separate out four and. Vote on that separately.
All right, I'm seeing nine heads from the council. Is there agreement on it? Can I see some thumbs up from the council? Would you like to do that? Okay, then let me hear a second for Councilmember Moore.
Second.
All right. So we have that. So you, your motion, Mr. Moore, is for us to approve items one through three and then continue discussing item four separately for a separate vote. Correct. All right. Uh, so we have that. I I'm going to reopen the public hearing, I think, since we've made a change here and see if anybody would like to very quickly speak, and then we'll have a vote.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. So we'll close the public uh, hearing for final time tonight. If we have a roll call, vote on that particular motion, please.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right, counsel. So we did the easy stuff. It's like we, when you're kids and you've ate all the things you like in your plate and the broccoli's left. So uh, let's deal with the broccoli. So we have number four is it currently exists. We have the potential to draw. We have the potential to drop part of it, which was the staff addition going beyond the housing element for NM density housing. And we also have the potential, if we wish, to ask for uh. Coming back with an ordinance to allow council approval. Of decisions in these matters. So that's what we have to work with. Any further discussion from anybody? Councilmember Ford, please go ahead.
Uh, uh, if unless there's other discussion, I would move uh, that we introduce an ordinance, we move in the requirement for use permit. Develop multi-family housing in the NU zoning districts. Consistent with the general plan.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I will ask since it's the one last thing on the table, I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask you anyhow. You're not willing to amend that to add any uh, oversight from the council, final approval from the council? As part of that particular motion?
Um, no, I think that would have to come back for a separate public hearing. I can't, I can't move that now. That's not on the, not on tonight's agenda.
You can make that direction though tonight, and we could make that part of, part of the motion, the direction to do that. So I'm asking if you're willing to entertain that. And that's okay if you're not. I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, it it would not be part of my motion. No.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion from council? Seeing done, I I will go to, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
No.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
No.
Mayor Landman.
And no, I think as well. All right. So we're back. Um, two options remaining. We can take what was just previously proposed. And add the council final approval to it, or we could go back to the original. And include NM in it and add the council oversight to it too. So I'm open to motions from anybody in the council or further discussion. Uh, Councilmember Sparks, this here.
Thank you. I I have a question about this um, procedurally. This seems like a a new ordinance update that would require some staff time. So should this go on to our process that we've used for adding new agenda items? Um.
I don't think so myself, but I'll ask the city attorney to weigh in on that and the city manager. Thank you.
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I think this is uh, this these types of amendments are germane to the particular agenda item that's in front of you. So I I don't see it as a new. Agenda item or a new, a new, new matter.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I would just add, I mean, I I'm sure this is obvious to everybody, but um, the another option is just to uh. Uh, I mean, I know it's not consistent with the general plan direction, but leaving the uh, use permit in place as the process exists today.
I'm gonna ask you if you could fill that out, and I'm seeing a few possible looks uh, from the discussion with staff previous. I understood that could be problematic that we were kind of bound to removing that. Are you saying we could just leave the use permit for both NM and NU neighborhoods? Because I didn't see that as an option from our previous discussion, city manager Obit.
But it would be inconsistent with um, inconsistent with the housing element policies in the general plan. It's true. Um.
Mayor Lemon, I I would just add, uh, I think it's like. My concern is uh, adding additional discretionary steps to a housing process. Um, in light of the avalanche of housing law that's passed. I'm, I'm not comfortable letting you know that we could actually do that now. So I think i- if if the direction is to review state law to ensure that such a change would be consistent and allowed. Absolutely interested in doing that, but what I think um. If the, I I think that direction is as likely to be problematic as leaving the current policies in place, frankly. So I think if the.
Let me ask you which one would be worse in your mind, Mr. House, which would be more problematic for the state?
Um, I. I'm, uh, to me, changing the discretionary process for housing to to add it another layer. Um, big picture, citywide is li- for my, I mean, this is just speculation. It seemed to be much more of a uh, potential impediment. Or from the state's perspective on housing production than just leaving it in one district in one zone. Because actually I need clarification. Is the, is the direction potentially gonna be that the council wants to take action on all use permits? Only use permits for multi-family housing, only use permits for multi-family housing in NU zone. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to parse this. And depending on what that direction ends up being. My answer will be reflective of the level of problematic concern I would have based on the perception of the state.
Well, I think you heard what was on the table here and what exactly you provided us in the packet. This is item four and page five seventy eight. And the question was, what it sound like where we're going was either approving that as it currently stands, but adding that we come back. And change our ordinance to allow a final council of approval after planning uh, goes through this or alternately. To do just that, but to also drop the neighborhood median density since that was a, an add-on. Those were the two options I heard, and I think that was specifically what the council was looking at.
So in response to that, dropping the neighborhood medium is not problematic at all from the state review of our housing element. Perspective because that's not a policy or program that we've committed to.
So yeah, I I understand that. So so you, so that's what we would be suggesting, one of those two things.
Can I jump in with a clarification?
Well, I'd like to let Mr. House finish his thought, then I'll, then I'll come right to you next.
Well, and and then from what I've heard, I think if there's concern over the decision making process for use permits or design review for. Multi-family housing, it would only be in these districts, it sounds like. I'm kind of struggling on how to parse that.
I believe, I believe that was how my understanding is well, uh, Mr. House uh.
So I will say it sounds like it's a little bit of a spot zoning process and it. I just would want some time to review the law because again, there's been so much that's passed and it's such a nuanced thing. Um, that I'm not, I I don't think I have a solid perspective. I don't know if the city attorney would like to add anything, but.
Well, while he's thinking about it, let me ask you that. Uh, given there's a question of that, and that seems to be something this council is interested to have a comfort with what you brought before us. Would it be best then, since we've done one through three, to. Set item four aside for the time thing and bring it back once you're ready to talk about what other options we might have?
If the council is um, not comfortable deciding on the two. Kind of pieces before them with item four, then I do believe that's, that's probably the best approach.
I mean, I'm open to what the council wants to do. Uh, you know my feelings, but frankly, I could live with the addition of medium. Density neighborhoods as well, as long as we have that council oversight. I'm not comfortable with being. An in-house thing that may or may not come in front of us or in front of the general public uh, to the degree that I'd like to see. I could, I'm not interested if I have that and cutting it out personally, but uh. All right, I promise you, Councilmember Sparks, your next thing, Councilman, then Vice Mayor Harvey.
I mean, just a clarification. It sounded to me like um, Noah was talking about use permits that I I had understood that we were asking about. Reviewing the design review process and adding, so I just wanted some clarification. Are we talking about bringing use permits to the council or being design review to the council?
What as we often have is when things come out, planning commission, many things from planning commission go to final approval for the council. That was merely what we're looking at. I don't think we're second guessing the design review so much as uh. Seeing if if we agree with, well, in a way, we're actually, I'll I'll change that. I think we are a bit. Because as Mr. Ford said, we don't always rubber stamp what comes out of planning, although we most of the time agree.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm tr- I I'm just confused now, not on the substantive issues, but just on. I'm just confused on procedurally on what it is we're asking to be done because I.
Miss, yeah, Mister Mayor, I, if I could, I think what I understood from uh, your suggestion of of what the options would be. It it would be to eliminate the use permit requirement, but with the caveat. That design review for those types of projects would come to the council no matter what. That was. That was the policy change that you wanted to implement as I understood it. There wouldn't be a a use permit requirement anymore. So it would have to be. The design review permit that would come to the.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying with the exceptions. I did expect, and I believe most my colleagues expected that to go through planning first. Um. Simply for that extra set of eyes from a specific thing, but yeah, I think that sums it up well. Councilmember Harvey and then Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Harvey, then Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, this seems like it's gone full circle and now I'm, I I mean, I I'm reading what this says, but what it says. And what we're talking about are two different things. It says that if we take out the use permit. We would still be subject to discretionary design review approval by the planning commission or the city council, depending upon the project, but. What I'm hearing it and. We talked a lot about that the elements that are in the design review. We still have discretion on a lot of the things that people get concerned about. But now really what I'm hearing is that, well, that's only at the planning commission and. They may or may, they may or may not have the same um. Uh, thoughts about it that the council has. So I I I'm just feeling like we're, we're kind of. I felt really good when it got explained that we didn't lose, you know, this discretionary opportunity. And and I felt that I could give up on the use permit, but now I I'm feeling like. Well, if we give up that, then we've given up all of it and and projects will just come. You know, willy nilly their way and and the planning commission. You know, ma- mayor, may or may not catch things and there may or may not be public there to participate and. Then, you know, we'll have people coming and screaming at us. So I I I'm kind of. At a loss at this point because I feel like we're trying to do the right thing and we're trying to make it easier. But we're, we're kind of being put in a box that I'm not real comfortable with.
Yeah, that's why I suggested it might be better to. Mister House has raised that he's not sure if it's legal, we're legally able to have. Actually, look at this as a city council and look at these things and we might not be able to change these ordinances. And I'm saying that kidding, he didn't quite say it like that, but I'm laughing. We're saying how many circumstances were actually that not supposed to be able to weigh in anymore? And that that's problematic and the state will come after us. Um. Yeah, I that that's the same concern I certainly had. We. We know, I would say that it's not that I think planning misses things. I don't think they rarely miss things from the eye that they, the lens that they look through. The problem is it's just a different lens and a more narrowly focused lens than than we use. And we've seen that recently. Things that worked by their checklist were problems here. And so that's why I do want some sort of oversight and I'm not hearing good suggestions coming tonight. So I still like the idea of just amending to the degree. I I don't think that's adding hurdle uh. Perhaps people could make that argument, but uh, at any rate, I think I said this already. So I'm gonna go to Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. Yeah, thanks. I I just wanted a quick clarification. Um. Removing the use permit requirement from either or both zones. Um, in my understanding of the process would not cause any projects to avoid city council that currently have to come to city council. I believe that's correct. JP here, Noah, can you help me?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay, so removing the use permit does not remove any projects from city council oversight that currently have city council oversight. I just want to make sure that's clear because it sounds like some people think that by removing the use permit, we're removing some city council oversight and that's simply not true.
That's right. Good point.
That's correct. Just to, just to emphasize in general, well, use permits are approved by the planning commission unless they're appealed. That, I know that's correct.
As it, as is design review, correct. Both of them are planning commission level decisions that they do not go to the city council except on appeal, which is always available. Uh, however, many projects will have an additional element that does require city council approval. A density bonus is one of them. The affordable housing agreement element of the project, regardless of whether it's approved, will become to the council. That's a council level decision.
Subdivision.
Yeah. So um. I'm gonna look at the caps and see if we're at a place where we're comfortable making a decision tonight. I'm not sure if we are. That's why I'd like to suggest that. Perhaps this particular item comes back to us for suggestions. From uh, Mister Obit, Mister Barker and Mister House and how we can get to a place that uh. The council feels some comfort in uh, opening this up and still feels like they have some control that uh. What might be a best way to go forward? We know a few directions we've looked at and there might be some others, but I think we've. Done as much as we can as a group tonight. I'm not sure we're gonna get ahead with it. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, um, I like that suggestion, but if they bring it back. I I like what you just said about the examples of the things that the it would have to go to council. If we could have some examples of, here's the things that would stay at planning commission. Here's the things exactly that would have to come to council and that might help us kind of look at what our universe is. And maybe make us feel a little bit more comfortable because I think right now we're just, I mean, as an elected official. You know, people are holding me accountable for for watching out for them. Um, I I I'm not here because a developer is here and yes, I want housing here. But that's not who I'm supposed to represent. I'm supposed to represent our our constituents. So I I I'm trying to do that. In the best way I can, yet have housing developed. So it it's kind of this fine balancing act. That we have to do, but it, but it's not, you know, it's not that simple. So if you.
I certainly agree with that. I, I'd like, my personal concern emerging from this is. It's a small thing that may only rarely pop up, but it would be use cases in boundary areas as I talked about, looking at the map of. Where NU encroaches on or is close to NM, you can see some areas where a typical buy, buy right. In essence, or at least with some restrictions streamlined, a three-story building where previously would have only been two stories. Might be projects that we might be uncomfortable, even though the great majority might be just fine. I'd love to see how we can deal with that, you know, in in some way. I'd like suggestions of that myself. Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate uh, Councilmember Harvey's comments that you are representing your constituents and I fully. I mean, I totally, completely respect that perspective and um, I I also, I I I also feel that I'm. Representing my constituents by looking out for their need to have more affordable housing. So I I I have no. Connections to developers and I'm a teacher, I'm not a developer. Um, but I'm. I'm coming at this from a place of looking out for the interests of constituents also who are drowning in the price of housing.
All right. So any other direction for council? Are we comfortable asking this to come back for one more uh? Pass through the grinder, uh, or does anybody have something they want to propose? I'm, I'm thinking we're all beat down thoroughly enough. We might be comfortable with that. I even seen some smiles, so perhaps we're not beat down enough, but all right.
This, Mister Mayor, uh, before we go on, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, like.
Please.
Uh, you, you had a motion that passed earlier. Um, it was kind of in the form of a straw poll on items one through three and it passed. And then we got to item four and you're asked for additional, you asked for that. Item four to come back, that's how I'm understanding it. Is that correct? And so should we interpret the motion to be that you introduced? The ordinance uh, to make all of the changes except for item four?
And that would be correct.
Okay.
I'd like to look to the council if anybody disagrees, but I believe that was not just a straw poll. That was a willingness that we all agreed in that portion and wanted to move forward with it tonight. Is it? I'm looking for nods. I'm seeing yes, okay.
So just so we're clear, we're gonna go ahead and strike out section four that's in the ordinance and uh, introduce the rest of the ordinance. Um, sections one, two. Three and five.
So we would be asking tonight then for somebody to move introduction of an ordinance as written, striking item four uh, on page five seventy eight.
Correct, and it's actually section four on page five ninety one of the packet.
Okay, that works for me. I'm looking at, I said, yeah, I think it's the same exact thing, but that's good.
Yeah, yeah, so eliminate section four from the ordinance.
All right, well. The end for the moment is before us, council. Do we have a motion to introduce that as as described?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I need clarification because I was operating from the list on page five seventy eight and now we're talking about the actual text of it. Ordinance, then I just need to make sure that.
Have that page again, please, Mr. Barker.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's page five ninety one of the packet. Section four is the sec, is the table. That lists whether uses are permitted or conditionally permitted or require use permit actually. And so. Um, based on the council direction, I understood that section four would be the amendments to section. Or to that section of the MUD code would not be implemented this time. They would come back at a later date.
I, can I?
Yes, please go ahead.
So I don't think those sections correspond to numbers one through four on.
No, they do not.
Five seventy eight because section five and six in the ordinance are also addressing permitted uses in NM. And and you, which is what we were talking about. So it's not just section four in the ordinance. It's. Whatever changes in the entire, so my proposal would be that we not introduce the ordinance at this point, that we ask for the whole ordinance to come back and. But agree among ourselves that we've already talked one through three to death and we're only going to deal with number four when it comes back because I think separating out. Five seventy eight, number four is going to be problematic.
We just, uh, this is Noah House again. I'm sorry, but if I can, Mr. Mayor, so uh. The grant funding that we received to cover the costs associated with doing this work is contingent on getting it done by July first. The partial ordinance introduction that was originally contemplated by the council is much desired by staff. In order to re-realize that budget savings and further our arguments with the state in how we are trying to implement our adopted housing element. So if there's only one element that's under discussion, staff would very much appreciate having the other pieces passed tonight or. At least by July first if that's possible.
Well, given that we haven't been that terribly helpful to you of late, I think that's the least we could do, Mr. House. Uh, let me ask our city attorney. Are you comfortable with language, something along the lines of introducing? An or, this ordinance, uh. As written with the exception, removing all items as described. In item number four at the bottom of packet page five seventy eight.
Uh, yeah, I would be comfortable with that, uh, that approach.
That means we're going to trust staff, Mr. Obid, to keep his eagle eye and make sure this works appropriately. Sorry about that, but this way would allow you to meet the time constraint. Uh, that you'd like to make it. If that sounds agreeable. To uh, our legal help and uh, the council, maybe that would be the way to go.
Yeah, that would be workable. And just, just for the record, the council will see this again. It will, it will come back for final adoption at the, at the next meeting. So if if we make an error, you can correct it at that time.
And that's perfect. And so I think hopefully that's the best outcome we can get tonight. I like it. So that's the motion. Would somebody like to say they'd like to do this as described?
Moved as described.
Second.
Mr. Barker, is that meet your comfort level?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you, council. I'm going to go see if we can have a roll call vote now, please.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. Thank you, council. We're three quarters of the way through it. Um. It is now almost eight fifteen. Uh, we're at it going on not quite two and a half hours. I wonder, is there an interest in taking five, ten minute break? Maybe before we go to the rest of the agenda. I saw one thumbs up. That's I see two. I see one, five fingers up. Okay. We're going to take a ten minute break and come back here at eight twenty three. We'll be adjourned till then or in recess till then. Thank you, everybody.
I'm.
Well, clearly, we haven't been worked hard enough yet because everybody's actually back a minute or so early. So congratulations on being a resilient council, everybody. I'll check with staff and see if we're all ready to go with the get to our regular agenda, Mr. Obed. Are we set?
Yes, we are set. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Thank you. So all right. So that takes us now to item 11. This is our regular agenda and we have one action item tonight, which is a part-time clerk for Sonoma County Mayor's and Council Members Association. We have a staff report. I believe Mr. Obed will be making it tonight.
I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I mean, some video issues here. Anyway, in the meantime, I will go ahead and just give the report while I work on my video. So the mayors and council members association of Sonoma County is a, as you all know, is a countywide organization where the council members from around the county get together and have bids basically a forum to to network and share ideas and coordinate on issues of regional concern. The format of it currently is that there's there's a board, which is mayors, and then there's the general membership, which are the council members. And they they meet every other, every other month. And right now, the way it's split up is is there's a chair city, Cattati, this year is the chair city. And it rotates alphabetically through all the cities in the county. So the city is a chair city every nine years. And then the next city in the rotation, so in this case, in this particular year, the next city in the rotation was Healdsburg. They would be considered the program cities. In other words, the city that lines up speakers to speak at the at the general membership meetings. Whereas the chair city will will preside over the meeting, so run the meetings, as well as publish the agendas, host the website for the year, and just generally organize things. And then there's a third city that's involved, and that rotates unlike the first two, which are the chair and the program city for the year. The third city is a host city. So for each meeting, particularly when they're in person, they rotate around. So for example, the most recent one, the host city was Warner Park. And so their responsibility was to organize the meeting venue, the food, and, you know, take payments for food, you know, that kind of thing. So several years ago, before really, before this, you know, string of string of emergencies, natural natural disaster emergencies in the county, there was discussion countywide about both, you know, well, I guess the general, the general, there was two things really. One was that the rotating nature of the mayors and council members association was a little ad hoc, because for the chair and program cities, you don't see it except every nine years. And so everyone forgets how to do it. The host, the chairs of these websites that host the agendas moves every year. It just isn't, it's not a very streamlined process that has any continuity to it from year to year. The other issue was that the cities wanted, at least in areas where there's where there's widespread agreement on regional or countywide issues, they wanted to have a forum where they could get together and you know, potentially work on stuff together. And the current bylaws of the mayors and council members association doesn't really, it doesn't really, it's not really amenable to that, just the structure of the bylaws and the multiple general membership meetings, which are two months apart. To do anything, the way, kind of the way it's structured now, sort of the Cliff Notes version, is that the board has to make a recommendation in one meeting and then has to go to the general membership, which is another meeting two months later, and then the general membership can finally vote on it, another meeting, which is another two months after that. So by the time all that happens, whatever the issue is, in many cases, isn't even an issue anymore because the world's moved on. So so those were some of the things. And, you know, attached to the staff report is the the ad hoc members that were formed, and they were, it's a group of formerly mayors at the time, but now generally council members. So Tom Schwedholm from Santa Rosa, Melanie Bagby from Cloverdale, Theresa Barrett, Mayor Barrett from Petalima, and Nisa Hinton from Sebastopol. And it's staff with myself, and also Jeff Kay from, he's the manager from Healdsburg. So we're staff in the ad hoc, the ad hocks. We've had a couple of meetings. The ad hocks focus has been on the part-time clerk. And so this was the the proposed solution to add continuity and try to you know, get this sort of rather than every nine-year kind of thing, both relieve the staff burden every nine years as it rolls around, but also add continuity and structure to to this with a follow-up action of starting to work on the bylaws, which hasn't really started yet, but that's the next action. And so they wanted to get this upfront because some councils are well, actually, all councils are working on their budget, and some councils may need to budget for it, this kind of thing explicitly, others may not. That could be maybe part of you know, a city manager's budget, or there's the various ways different cities handle it, but they didn't want to get this out early, so it's in front of cities, so that if said some point later in the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2223, the bylaws are updated and they move forward with starting to hire the clerk, that the cities have the funding available to do that. And the estimated funding right now is probably around six or $7,000 a year, proposed to be equally split among the nine cities. With the caveat, and this is something just to think about too, when you discuss this item, there was a proposal from the subcommittee that whichever city takes on the administrative role, in other words, is managing the contract for this part-time clerk could get a 50% credit essentially, in lieu kind of credit towards the annual fee. So that would mean that their fee would maybe be 3,000-ish a year, and everyone else's would go up by 1,000 or so. So it might be, you know, eight or 9,000 instead of six. And these are all just estimated costs because we haven't, mayor's and council members group has not formalized this, or obviously started recruitment, but this, these numbers are based on a similar position in another mayors and council members association in the Bay Area. It's not that atypical to have this sort of function associated with mayors and council members. So it's, even though it's not, it's it's only an estimate, it's probably in the ballpark pretty close. So that is that's kind of it, except I will just add that this, aside from providing continuity, would also eliminate the need for programming city. So that would no longer be a thing because the proposed direction the bylaws are going is that the mayors would be helping set that direction and then and then this person would be finding the speakers to fulfill that program goal. There still would be a host city because the meetings would rotate around. So you still, you still need a city that would organize the event. You know, obviously, in coordination with the clerk and then the chair city to preside over the meeting, but the agendas, the website maintenance, meeting invitations, all that kind of stuff would then happen through this part-time clerk. So the chair city would have less responsibility, mostly just be presiding over the meeting and coordinating with the clerk on agendas. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, council, let's see if anybody has any questions for city manager Obed. Councilmember four.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. So my only question is, Damian, whether whether you and the ad hoc have talked about management of this contract person, and to what extent that would be handled by the oversight overseeing city who who actually, you know, issues the contract versus the the host, or sorry, the chair city for the year and that mayor, you know, where does the sort of day-to-day or week-to-week sort of oversight of this contract clerk lay?
Yeah, the expectation would be that the the fiscal agent, the city that actually manages the contract for the clerk would be managing clerk. And that's part of the recognition for the reduced fees. The city wouldn't would only be coordinating to the extent that they would be, you know, working on the agendas together, reviewing the agenda before it gets published, that kind of thing.
All right, anybody else? Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Damian, I was curious if the ad hoc had discussed the employee status of a contract employee, if they're essentially doing the same functions for the same people in the same locations all the time.
Well, I mean, we, there wasn't a long conversation about like labor union type stuff, but it's a, it's a common position in other mayors and council members groups. And so before anyone would, when someone would draft the contract, that would have to obviously be clear that this is a contract employee and not a independent contractor and not a essentially, you know, trying to get around the staff person by hiring a contractor, which is something CalPERS would be concerned about.
Okay, so the ad hoc was comfortable with that positioning?
Yeah, it was clear, it was clear in the conversation that it was a contract employee and not a not a actual employee of one of the cities that's the fiscal agent.
Thank you. That was my only concern on that.
All right. I'm not seeing any other hands go up. Let's check this, see if we have any participants. I'm seeing no attendees right now. I will double check with our city clerk and just confirm we have nobody for public comment.
That is correct, Mayor Lemon. We currently have no attendees.
Excellent. Thank you. So without, I'll bring it back to the council for any final comments. And I believe you're looking for direction tonight, Mr. Obed, not a motion?
Yeah, I missed direction. So one of the things that's not totally clear at this point, because it still has to be discussed at the ad hoc, how how the position will ultimately get approved at the mayors and council members level, whether that's going to be a board decision or more likely a general membership meeting decision vote. So it wouldn't probably just be the mayor making the direction or voting on this, it would probably be the entire council or whoever's present. So that, that's why, that's why it was this direction, that the city supports it. So whichever members need to vote on it ultimately.
So we'll be looking for direction tonight, council. And also, I think there was a question if we were all individually okay with the proposal. I don't know if it's set in stone yet, but the proposal to give a discount to whatever city is administering the employees. So Councilman Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
Yes, this certainly feels like it's a move in the right direction. I know over the years when we've had things that we need to get out to all the mayors and council members, it's often cumbersome to even find out what clerk in what city, where you need to get it to, to get that information out. So the the single point of contact to be able to get things out to everyone and get them out quickly certainly is a step in the right direction. So even just at that, it will help us all move forward, I think. So I am generally okay with this as a direction. I like the idea that was thrown out that the the city that manages the contract gets the discount. I think that that's fair enough. I had similar concerns that council member Moore had about, you know, does that make them, you know, an employee of that city since they have the contract? But it stated in here that it's not as if mayors and council members could sign a contract because they're not a legal entity to be able to do that. So I don't see any other way around that since they aren't an entity in and of themselves. So those are my two cents worth.
Thank you. Anybody? Councilmember four.
Yeah, I'm fully in support of the direction in in the staff report and including the the discount for the for the contracting city. I think the scheme makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Yeah, I've seen some general nods and thumbs up. I would agree. I, I want to thank the ad hoc committee. I look at Exhibit A, some of the recommendations and interests and issues that were raised on page, starting in packet page 602. And I think a lot of those really make a lot of sense to making this a much more useful and vibrant organization. There's been a lot of effort in the past to try and change directions, you know, one year we allowed mayor's reports, one year we cut them, we did this, we did that. But those were all just surface level things that really didn't do anything. I think this is a much better start of direction here, and I think they'll make this a much more useful, both for as a mayor's as a group functioning, as we found was somewhat necessary during 2020, there was some value in that, but just in general for the council members association aspect of it too. So with that, I'm hearing general direction of support for this, as well as the suggestion of giving the administering city a credit. Mr. Obed, is that sufficient for you tonight?
That's great. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So we've had our discussion and public comment, no motion for that. So before we let Mr. Obed get off the speaker, it's time for the city managers' report.
Mayor, members of the council, so my camera seems to have fallen on holiday on me, so apologize. But so a couple of things, reminder that coming up very soon here, actually, this next weekend is prescription drug take-back day here at the community center on 216 East School Street. This is Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday, April 30th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And it's for older unused prescription drugs. So it's a great way to keep them out of the landfill, keep them out of the wastewater treatment system or whatever way people dispose of old drugs that aren't the proper way. Obviously, the council knows all this, but for any of the public that might be listening to this meeting, we do have an upcoming budget study session for capital projects and internal service funds on May 17th. So that's right around the corner. Good news about the roundabout project that City Warner Park has been working on, e-commerce. The current schedule has them expecting to reopen all lanes by mid-May. So they have a couple of lanes open right now, but they're looking at mid-May to get that fully reopened. The West Side project, so the contractors still working away out there. They added the asphalt berms along the walking path over West School Street just recently, as well as the striping on the, on the new street areas. So that's, so that's done. They're still working on the problematic area that's on West Cattati between West Cattati Oaks and Maple primarily. So they're still working through the solution on that. But we're hoping to get that the solution nailed down and done as soon as possible. So people don't have to drive on dirt roads for too much longer out there. We're also working on a street maintenance project. That's, you know, as we do these reconstruction projects, we also do a maintenance project to keep the streets that are in good condition in good condition. And we're working on the design of that, and that's currently projected to be sturdy field and some paving of over three miles of street. So that's good news as we move into the continual twice-a-year paving project right now. The Pocket Park and McGinnis Marsh Pathway, those projects, as I mentioned before, are out to bid. The bids open on May 4th. And it includes new pathways on McGinnis from, well, across the bridge to Lincoln and also to Marsh. Using that that kind of decomposed granite type paving material that you see in some of the new pathways around the ranch and also over on the west side. And then also at Pocket Park, the Pocket Park also is going to include ballerina lighting benches and water bottle filling stations. So that's all coming up here shortly. And then on Saturday, May 7th, Farmster is doing a tour of the ranch from 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. And it's an educational program for 45 minutes to learn about the agricultural history of the ranch. And it's even going to be the opportunity to feed the livestock at the last 15 minutes. If people are interested, pre-registration is highly encouraged. And that's on the city's website. Friday, May 20th. And we have two exciting events taking place. One is the Bike to Wherever Day, which we have, we're going to have our normal Energizer station in La Plaza Park at the corner of Bora Lengue Highway and West Sierra between 7 a.m. and 10 a.m. And then we also at the Verona Flitty Ranch, Sandy Loom is doing another Free Youth Day in partnership with Sonoma County Library between the hours of 3:30 and 5 p.m. And the biblio bus from County Library will be there. And that's where kids can check out books, tour the ranch, visit the animals, and participate in hosted teen and tween activities, including live music and ice cream social. And this is free, but we do request people register ahead of time, just so we know and have enough materials for people to attend. We have a variety of other programs, including Sumba Fitness, Sumba Gold, Pre-Ballet, Dance Academy, toddler and parent music, the other classes. And we have some camps coming up, Camp Cattati Summer Camp with C I T program for teens, farm camp at the ranch, gymnastics camp, youth theater camps, and other stuff. We also have events such as Movies in the Park coming up, National Night Out, Kids' Day, and many more. So stay tuned for that. And all this stuff can be found on our website and for recreation programming, you can always contact our rec department at 665-4222, or Wilson at CattatiCities.org, or our Facebook, or other social media websites. So that I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I'll see if the council has any questions for city manager Obed. I'm seeing a tired council. They appear satisfied. That's good news, city manager Obed. I'll just comment, you mentioned talking about the difficulty with the subsurface on the west side. You mentioned having it nailed down. I hope that's not the design we've ultimately seized upon. It's the best way to fix that substrate, but we'll see what Gelati and Sons can come up with. Thank you. If that gets out in public, I hope we're getting very long nails. That's all I can say. So next, that brings us to item 13, council. This is city council member reports, and I'm looking to see whose hand goes up first. Vice Mayor Hardy.
All right, just have a couple of reports. The first one is there, excuse me, was a second community meeting about the groundwater sustainability plan. It was originally going to be held in person, but they got too many respondents, so it had to be moved to Zoom. There was about 50 people. Staff was just right on it answering questions that they, there was three staff answering questions. The minute people could put out a question, they they were able to answer them. The facilitator was able to summarize some of the common questions and things, but it was very well attended and a lot of really great questions. There will be two more meetings. There was actually one tonight in Windsor, and there's another one tomorrow in Santa Rosa. So that's groundwater. I also attended the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and this one, you're going to have to bear with me because they had a lot of really good stuff to report. We didn't, because of COVID, put out a zero-waste guide last year, but the new one is just coming off the printer. So you will be seeing those in English and Spanish. So that's great. We received a $2.5 million California Youth Workforce Development Grant in association with Youth Job Corps and Conservation Corps, and they're going to be doing a whole lot of cleanup of hotspots, of dumping areas and places like that throughout the county. They have a whole list of those. They're going to also be helping with food distribution, and they're also looking to be able to recycle some aspects of some solar panels. So that's exciting. The beverage container CRV kiosk in Sebastopol finally opened. It's doing very well. There is an opportunity for 10 more of those with the grant. So hopefully, we can get one in our general vicinity. The problem has been with finding a location where people are willing to to host that. But it works really well. It's in like basically a cargo container, and they open up the doors and they have a, you know, laptop setup and they weigh things, and it's been really very, very receptive out there. So that's worked really very well. The next thing is, is they received a grant and got a food recovery truck. So they will be working with the Observation Corps of North Bay to do rescuing edible food and feeding our community. So that's pretty exciting that you'll be seeing that truck around. The compost rebate program that they had last year is starting again this year. There is going to be a Fix-It Clinic and Reuse Fair on May 14th. So the Fix-It, they'll have people there to help fixing certain things like bicycles and and things like that. And then there will be this year a North Bay Zero Waste Week starting Monday, July 25th. So there's various events that will be associated with that. So there is a whole lot of things going on. Staff have been really busy on that. So I, sorry for it to be so long, but I thought you guys should know about all of those things that are happening. And of course, all the stuff is out on the website, but I thought you should know. That's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. It's nice to have a long report that's all good news. We don't usually get that.
Well, they had been, you know, we didn't have a meeting, we didn't have a meeting last month, and then all this stuff, you know, just started happening and stuff. So it was, it was good to hear that a lot of stuff is opening up and happening.
That's good. All right. I'm going to look to my colleagues and see if I see any of their hands rise. Say one, two, three, not seeing them. I do have one report tonight. Saying one, two, three, not seeing them, I do have one report tonight. The few you may have noticed in our inbox, I believe it was late last week, really the worst timing in the world for something good. A request for us to support a monarch butterfly flight pledge, this was a mayor's pledge to support protection of habitat. And species for the monarch butterfly, and. We were asked to support, and I was actually, this was actually brought to my attention, flagged for me by council member Sparks, so I wanted to mention that, and I'll ask if she has any comments. In a minute about it, but she did bring this to my attention, I'm glad she did. The only challenge is that the two of us face is that one, only Americans sign up. Number two, even though we got the nail, not that long ago, the deadline is four days from now. And so that doesn't give us a lot of time to agendize this or anything, and the problem is, it is not just a simple pledge of support. It requires us to begin work on taking actions, ideally three actions from a large list in a calendar year. With that, knowing that we wouldn't have time to agendize any. Challenging or difficult actions, I thought it might be nice to start this project up just by working with the city manager and using our new agenda item process. To see what things we could do that at least we could say there was some impact, so we could add these at the last minute. And I wanted to suggest that we. And these are things from a list that they allow, number one, adopt ordinances that support reducing light pollution, we've done some of that. And I think that's might be an important door for the future, something we could revisit perhaps more strongly in years to come. Secondly, host or support a native seed or plant giveaway. And the city manager suggests we obviously could probably do something like that through Farmston. Or perhaps a water consecration program. And lastly, issue a proclamation, which is pretty easy to do, so. So I wanted to report out that unless council objects, and I'm waiting to see who wants to be listed as hating monarch butterflies right now, somebody actually does object. But we'll get the newspaper for once, that's for sure, but if it's okay with the group, I'll, it requires. The area have to actually sign up, create a web portal, and then there's required end of the year reporting, so it's one more reporting, but I'll do that this year, and perhaps next year, the incoming mayor can deal with it that time. And then all the things we've talked about, an ordinance, any ordinances, any proclamations, of course, will come back to us in public meetings appropriately, so. We've tried to react to a good opportunity quickly, and I hope that works for the council, I'll. Open the Florida Councilmember Sparks and thank her again for bringing this to my attention.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, and I just want to thank you for for being enthusiastic about about signing on to this, and. A lot of the things on the suggested work item list are things that we're sort of already aiming towards doing anyway, so I thought it was a really good fit and. We can all use something sort of hopeful that we can measurably achieve, I think it'll, I think it'll just be a great thing for the city and. Hopefully, we can bring back monarchs to Cattati.
Well, I will ask you again, I'll ask you to be my virtual reminder at the end of the year to make sure that with everything else, I don't remember that I have to check back in and inform them of our progress, so if you can help me with that, I'm happy to do this part.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy, happy to help any way I can, thank you so much.
All right, so that concludes our city council member reports, so that brings us now to item fourteen, public comment on non-action agenda items, let's check and see. I am unfortunately not seeing any participation at this point in our meeting, I will double check with our city clerk since it's an important one.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Landman, currently no attendees.
All right, so that concludes item fourteen, I'll ask the city manager if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
Nothing other than what was announced earlier with the cannabis ordinance.
Good, thank you, noted, let me ask the city manager one more question, our placeholder for announcement of closed session, do we have a closed session tonight?
We do, Mayor, thank you, yep.
Wrong answer, oh well, okay. Very good, so I'll check, everybody has the link, I don't know if I saw it come across the transom, I'll have to double check, I'm sure it did, so with that, then we have a. Closed session, announcement of closed session topics and adjourned to closed session, this is a conference with unrepresented employees, government code section. Five four nine five seven point six. City designated representative will be city manager or designate, and the employee organization is the unrepresented group. So with that, we will. Adjourn to closed sessions, we'll be back to report out if we have anything to report out. See you on the other side, everybody.
Uh oh, we lost the bear.
Keep saying we need to use the buddy system. Go back and forth.
Through the, through the airwaves. Fly together.
Maybe the iPads are a little bit more clunky.
Well, and Zoom does things once.
Maybe Zoom was updating spontaneously.
There he is.
Sorry for the delay. Zoom was not sure if it wanted to open up and it had to think about it for a minute or two, but ultimately it decided it was willing to, which I'm very grateful for. So we're back from closed session. We have nothing to report out tonight. So that concludes item 17 and brings us to item 18, which is adjournment at 9:45 straight up. So thank you everybody. Look forward to seeing you next meeting. Take care.